And hot air furnaces are desired to improve efficiency and quality of life in the village's residential neighborhoods. And business areas and to reduce costs to all customers, reduce capital needs and improve reliability. And voltage and service to the municipal electric system of the village of Ross's Point. And whereas the village of, village board of Ross's Point desires to pass regulation. On the use of electric boilers and hot air furnaces within the village of Ross's Point. And basically, we just, we have, there's a set of regulations that if you want to put in an electric boiler. The regulations are here on how to do it. You can still put one in. We're not outlawing it. We're saying it's not the best for our system, but you can do it as long as you follow these rules. Is there any comments on the board? Um, at this time, we're not, we're not gonna pass a local law. We just wanted to have a hearing on it. We'll pass it at another time. Um, the, our attorney wants to look this over and make sure everything is alright before we pass the local law.
Dale?
Yes?
Do you want to open the meeting to the public first?
Um, I think no, we have to do the hearing.
Oh, you gotta do the hearing first?
Yeah. And our second hearing is on cannabis law. Um, a local law adopted pursuant, pursuant to cannabis law one thirty-one opting out of licensing. And establishing retail cannabis dispensaries onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the village of Ross's Point. It is in intent of this local law to opt out, the village of, the village of Ross's Point to opt. Out of hosting onsite cannabis consumption establishments within its border. This local law has adopted pursuant to cannabis law one thirty-one, which expressly authorizes cities. And villages to opt out of allowing onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate and operate within their boundaries. The village board of Ross's Point, Clinton County hereby opts out of allowing onsite cannabis consumption establishments. From locating and operating within the boundaries of the village of Ross's Point. So do we need? We need to open the, does anybody have any comments? So basically, we're just opting out for having establishments here inside the village to consume cannabis.
So that law stays in effect unless it's rescinded?
Exactly.
I recommend it.
So we need a roll call vote for, um, trustee Arnold?
No.
No? Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Trustee Menard votes aye.
Oh, sorry.
You will?
I misunderstood you. Okay. Aye.
Aye, the vote for?
I vote against it.
You vote against?
Having this.
So you want cannabis in there?
No, no, I vote against it.
So this is, this is opting out, so this is saying we can't have establishments in the village?
Alright, okay.
Just to make sure. So?
Aye.
Aye, so we have three ayes.
Sorry about that.
No problem, just wanna make sure.
My age is getting to me.
Everybody's understanding. Okay, now we can open the, uh, meeting to the public. Anybody have any comments? Questions for the board?
Um, last week, there was a special meeting to discuss, um, the greenhouse and they had a representative by Gas Chrome, um.
Can you state your names and your address, Sharon?
Right, and, but, was there a prior one for CSRS?
She has trouble hearing. Can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a hearing issue.
No problem.
Sharon Burts, thirty-five Montgomery Street, Ross's Point, New York. That's S H A R M A N.
Um, yes, we had a meeting on the fifteenth with ERS, um, it was Harry Archibald, I'm not sure.
And the investor was ERS and the, the investor?
Yes, and?
Alright, was there a previous meeting with CSRS?
CRS, two CRSI came to, uh, I wanna say like three meetings ago.
Uh-huh.
They came and they discussed what they were going to do. Um, put servers in and then that's when we found out they were looking for twenty mags of power. And then everything kind of fell into place, ERS. And Harry Archibald, I'm not sure what his company's name is, but then they did, they asked for a special meeting to discuss. Um, the whole power and, and?
So the investor who spoke?
Yes.
He's the one who brings the two companies together, but they're actually separate companies because he didn't want to answer any questions regarding CSRS?
ERS owns the site and the building. And I believe him and his two CRSI are tenants. And I don't know what kind, what, if they have together or they're separate, I'm not, I'm not really sure. You know, we, we haven't been, felt that information yet, I guess.
Right, and he was talking about the, the greenhouse and, and what it would produce. He talked about kale and spinach. Is that, as far as we know, that's what's gonna be produced there? Or that's still all, all up in the air?
It's, yeah, it's still all up in the air and, uh, I'm not really sure what he would produce there, I'm not sure. He's just, he's just proposed to use the heat from the servers to run his greenhouses. And that's basically all we have for information that, other than what he stated.
Um, when he, they were talking about all the, the power outlet, the power that would be consumed by this.
Right.
Pretty much indicated that they would be willing to take up any additional costs so there would be no electrical charges increased by. So if and when that happens, that's all down, it's all like litigated, the whole bit, it's all in writing?
There's nothing in writing yet, so it would, no, it is just a statement that they made at the meeting.
Okay.
And there's nothing in black and white and as far as we're concerned, it needs to be down in black and white before we move forward.
So there's still, you're still in discussions over?
Yes.
The greenhouse or the ERS?
Yes.
Part of it?
And the servers.
Okay. And the servers as well?
Yeah, because the servers are still against our village law.
Right.
So, you know, we haven't made the decision yet, um, us as a board, um, we haven't. I guess we don't have all the facts yet. I mean, in, in my mind, we don't have all the facts. So it's hard for us to make a decision on.
Right. Are you at liberty to say what's going on right now? I know there's a lot of like metal outside of those buildings and there's lights and a bit of security.
Putting servers in.
Pardon?
They're putting servers in.
And that's why they have the security?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, Mr. Cooper went in there and, and he's our inspector and said there was servers in there. So I'm assuming they're using two mags of power, so they have to be using it for something. So I assume it's servers.
And they're doing that in complete, uh, they're going completely against the village law and they know about the village law and they're continuing to do that? So is there, yeah, is there a consequence for that? I mean, how did that prevent future?
If we, if we feel they're against our law, then we can shut them down or, you know, they can fight us in court over it, I guess. They say that the law isn't, well, I don't know, was it, isn't written correctly or whatever else, but, um.
I had some concerns about the credibility of the Harry, uh, Ac- Archibald?
Archibald, yeah, whatever.
I wasn't able to go to the meeting previous to that, but I attended that meeting and since doing a bit of research about him. Has the village looked into that at all? Have you talked to Watertown about sort of any background history? What I could read about him was that he does a lot of, um, deals in like Myanmar and these sort of third world, third world countries. Where there's current, you know, undergoing like a coup. I mean, I just, I, is there greenhouses he's built before? It, it, I couldn't find any greenhouses that he's built on these solar panels. And it, it, the whole thing reads very sketchy and I'm just concerned, living in the village and planning to, you know, raise my children here for years to come. What, what is the real intention? You know, what, what is the real intention of, of that? It's, it's concerning and I don't wanna see a village lobbying change.
We're also concerned. I mean, like I said, we're. They're telling, they're telling us what, what we wanna hear.
Oh, absolutely, it seems.
You know, they're, they're not giving us the whole story and the whole picture. So that's gonna have to come out before any decision is made, in my, in my eyes, anyway, I think the board's eyes.
Painting a picture of greenhouses, I mean, people eat that right up, like, oh, greenhouse, it's, it's so amazing for our village, but. I haven't seen one greenhouse he's actually built.
Well?
Solar panels, maybe, but I don't know, maybe we need to do a little more research into this guy.
Also, if you were at that meeting, did you or did you not hear him say, there's no money made in greenhouses? So why is he willing to spend millions of dollars? On our electrical system when he's not gonna make any money with these greenhouses? So is he tied with this two CRSI? I don't know. I, I, there's just a lot of questions that need to be answered before the board makes any kind of decision, I feel.
And what does he intend to harvest in a greenhouse too? I mean, it's like, that could be a very lucrative business and you have an elementary school right across the street, so. I know you're doing your job, we're not criticizing the board at all, it's just, I wish they could have a little more transparency.
There's still a lot, a lot more to be?
What type of relationship does that set for, to our village when they are going complete disregard of it and they continue to pack it for the servers? I mean, what is that, how, what does that show for us as a village? It's so disrespectful.
Yeah, well, they, and I?
Your attorney was here.
I, I, I can't comment on that.
I'm sure.
Yeah, okay.
I, 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 yes, I, I, I totally agree. They've gone, they've gone too far without the proper permit. And without us being informed properly of what's actually going on there and what's gonna be going on. And, yeah, and there's still a lot of information that we need before, before a final decision is made. That's, that's for sure. And we, we hear, we hear you. We, we feel the same way that, you know. We, we, we have concerns also, and I mean, that's why we had the meeting on the, on the fifteenth. To try to get some truth out of what's going on over there and what's gonna go on and. How much of whatever is going on is gonna go on and, you know, so.
Thank you.
Will there be another public meeting that's during better hours?
I hope so.
Three o'clock in the afternoon seems a little long.
Yeah, I mean, I hope that they come to, you know, one of our meetings in January or February. You know, and, and explain a little bit more to us what's, you know, what they're actually willing to do and, and what, what they're gonna do. You know, I mean, they've already put all these servers in, they knew that it was against our village laws. But they went ahead anyway. So, yeah, hopefully they'll come and hopefully more people will show up and ask more questions.
At what point can, can we shut them down? I mean, what, how far does it have to go? Is it a big litigation process where you?
Yeah, I'm sure it is. It's, that would be a lawyer question, but I'm sure it's not gonna be, uh, an easy, an easy shutdown. You know, and I mean, I guess we, we're gonna have to get somebody to interpret the law, a judge or whatever. That either says that we're right or that we're wrong and they can put these servers in. I mean, that's basically what I think.
Plasper got a moratorium on the servers, correct? And they listed numerous reasons for, uh, that. I think many cities and villages have that.
See, and I, I've been on the board for a while and, and we basically copied their moratorium. Because we're both NYPLA's, uh, members. And when they put the moratorium in, when Bitcoin was going all around and server farms. Basically, these people are looking for the cheap electricity. So they, Plasper put their moratorium in, so shortly after that, we as a board, Dan was here, Dan was the mayor at the time. And we put our moratorium in and basically copied theirs. So, I don't know, I mean, I would hope it would stand up in court of law, you know, this.
Where does the investor sit in all this? I mean, is he trying to help you out with any of this or just trying to pull things together?
Well, I think he's just trying to work everything together so that?
To their advantage, yeah, I think?
Yeah, so they can get the cheap electricity and, you know, um. You know, so they're, you know, they're, they're, it's a very complicated situation, let's put it that way. And, and it needs a lot more discussion, it needs a lot more lawyers to look into it. And if we have, you know, if we have to go to court and get a ruling on it, then that's what we'll do. Yeah, I mean, that's, that was our main concern in the first place and we asked them, ERS, well over a year ago, are you gonna put a server farm in there? No, no, we're not gonna put a server farm. You know, so they, they're not calling it a server farm, they're calling it a server development. So, I don't know. To me, what we have for paperwork, there's fifty-eight hundred servers that are going in there. I don't know if you wanna call it a farm or development or whatever else it is, but I believe it's against our law. And, you know, unless we can work something out and we get a little more information on what they're doing and, you know. What they're going to do to keep our village residents safe from, uh, them taking all the power. So there's, there's a lot more discussions that have to go on and hopefully a lot more public meetings. You know, so, but yes, thank you for your comments. I wish a lot more people would comment on this. You know, either send it to our Facebook page or, you know, whether you like it or whether you don't like. You know?
Come to the meeting.
If anybody, anybody, I don't, you don't have to come to the meetings, but we have Facebook, there's a lot of people that can get on Facebook. Let's make some comments on there, whether we liked it or, you know, liked it or didn't like it.
We're not Facebook, I mean, a lot of people don't do the Facebook and that's, that's the issue, so. I think we hear through word of mouth that there's a meeting or that, you know, we realize you can't always put it in the paper, but, um.
Yeah, but you can always go on our website, make comments. We're always, always looking for the village residents' info. Okay, any more comments from?
Well, I have one last comment. I think it's a little unacceptable that the mayor, uh, broadcasted, um, some information on Facebook. Uh, streams, which I think is sort of, you know, that right there should be called for a sign of resignation. I think that that's really, uh, goes against the law that the village is supposed to enact. I think hearing about that as a village amongst the other, uh, um, people was really kind of disgusting in a way. Because our mayor's supposed to be running on behalf of the village and I think that's, that's terrible.
That will be addressed also. That will be addressed. I can, I can promise you that. Any other comments from the public? Okay, we want the regular session or, um, minutes of the, oh, no? Did you wanna speak about the Fourth of July meeting? You're asking, okay, is that, uh, correspondence?
Yeah, that's just correspondence.
Okay. Um, minutes of the December sixth regular meeting and the December fifteenth special meeting. Any additions or deletions?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as printed?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, bills? Any?
I have, uh, three changes tonight. Uh, the first one is, uh, purchase order twenty-two dash zero zero seven three three at Eastern Insurance Agency. That bill for fifty-one dollars and ninety-one cents should be deleted off the list. I have two additions. The first one is the New York State Retirement Local, Local Retirement System, the amount of one fifty-one, two hundred and six. Hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars is our annual contribution to the retirement system. And the second one is business card, the amount of one forty-three, forty-seven, that is hotel reservations for code enforcement.
Um, we get a bill for PLN for thirty-six hundred dollars, I would like thirty-six hundred eighteen and ninety-six cents. Um, I would like that taken off the bills right now also. I'd like a little more, uh, discussion on that with the mayor.
Need a motion on that?
Do we need a motion on that, Chris?
Well, you just, uh, just included the amendments that you want the bill removed.
Okay, so when you make a motion to pay the bill per se without PLN, PLN bill?
I make a motion to pay the bill except for the bill for PLN.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now we're up to correspondence. Um, we have a letter from the Fourth of July Committee, um, asking us this year again to. Use the Ross's Point Civic Center, the grounds, the state, as well as the community park in downtown Ross's Point. Um, for the Fourth of July doing, um, to have a motion for that.
I make a motion, we let the Fourth of July Committee, uh, run the Fourth of July parade and stuff.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And along with that, we have, uh, Montgomery Post nine twelve, American Legion is asking for. A donation of fifty-five hundred dollars for the fireworks again this year. Um, our son is that?
It's, it's in the budget.
It's in the budget, okay. So can we have a motion to?
I, uh, I'll make a motion that we give the donation to the American Legion in about fifty-five hundred dollars.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, reports of mayor and trustee. Uh, tonight, I would like to, uh, thank Sam Horton from A.D. Thornton Refrigeration. Uh, he installed a new, uh, plexiglass shield in front of our, uh, snack bar. Had to cost nothing to the village, so we would just like to thank him and thank Ethan for the help of putting it up. And what else? Um, we have two things. Uh, we applied for a consolidated funding. For New York State for the waterfront revitalization program and we got denied that. But we also applied for the Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan that will help us with our comprehensive plan for. And we were awarded that for an amount of seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars. So that Ross's Point Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan. And I would like to thank everybody who had a hand in that grant. That'll help us out a lot for getting that grant through, getting that comprehensive plan through. And I have a resolution, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight. To establish a new civil service position. Whereas the village of Ross's Point has determined that for reasons of economy and efficiency. It is necessary to establish one position in a classified civil service. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Ross's Point hereby add the following labor civil service position effective December twentieth, twenty twenty. A full-time water and wastewater treatment plant operator at an hourly rate of nineteen dollars. Be it therefore resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to take such action. As necessary to implement this resolution so as to comply with civil service law, rules and regulations of the Civil Service Commission. Of Clinton County Policies of the Village of Ross's Point in terms and conditions of existing negotiated agreements. This resolution shall take effective immediately. Um, a roll call vote, trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
And trustee Menard votes aye. And I think that's all. Uh, trustee Arnold?
Uh, I'd like to thank the village crew for coming up in the streets today. They did a nice job. And also, I'd like to thank the fire department for their nice parade that they did last night. It was really impressive. And also, I'd like to. Take and look into hiring a typist.
Okay.
For, for Mr. Latimer, so.
Is it gonna be full-time or is it gonna be part-time with the last one?
Uh, full-time, I think.
What we would, what we would like to do for the time being, uh, would be to do part-time, the same as what Amy was. Um, to start off with and, um, we'll, we'll see as far as we need to progress into, uh, more hours as time goes. But, um, we're in desperate need of, of a typist.
I make that in the motion.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have for now?
Trustee Rodriguez?
Uh, first, I'd like to, uh, apologize to everyone that I missed the last two meetings. Unfortunately, I, I did come down with COVID and I'm all better now. I don't like to miss these meetings as these guys know. I'd like to also thank the fire department, everybody that helped out with that parade yesterday. And, uh, we won't be meeting again, so I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have to say.
Other reports? Administrator, Nathan?
Actually, I do. Or did you wanna go first? Uh, we don't have. Uh, first of all, what I wanted to mention is, uh, trustee Pelkey is not here today because he's sick and he's abiding by. Village policy and, and staying at home. So I wanna thank trustee Pelkey for, uh, providing by village policy. Um, so the first thing that, that we wanted to discuss was, uh, industrial waste. As all of you may know, um, industrial waste, um, did an inquiry about bringing some, um, waste to our, our sewer plant. Um, but based upon further, uh, conversation, we would have to go through a different permit process. Um, to take their, their waste, so at this point in time, we opted out, um, taking their waste at this time. So we're not gonna move any forward with that. Um, the other thing that we wanted to mention to the residents is, um, after two long, two plus years. Um, the pop is finally back in its home in front of the village office and it looks really nice. Jared, uh, decorated it. It looks nice. I'd ask everybody to, if they haven't noticed, to look at it because it's, it's really nice. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, John Menard. For, uh, assistance at the, uh, village office. Um, thank you, John. And, um, I think that's, that's all that I have for right now.
Our son?
I don't know.
Nothing? Mr. Cooper?
Oh, just tidying up for the end of year and filing the paperwork for the state.
Um, the only thing I would like to close with is I would also like to thank everybody who participated in, um. The parade last night, it was very nice. Thank all the people that participated and I think you did a very nice service for the village. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And any other comments from the public?
Just comment on the parade, I'm sorry, Ben, go ahead.
On the parade, there was, uh, nine units that didn't show up, uh, they opted out for different reasons and stuff like that, so. It would have been, it would have been really nice.
It was, kids, kids just love it, especially with COVID. See all these bright lights, all this music, it's like brought the village together, so tremendous job.
And even the adults enjoy it, so.
And I, the, I also wanna say the village crew always works hard at, I sort of see them throughout, continuous throughout the day. They always do a wonderful job, no matter how cold it is, they're always out there working, they're always looking at what they can clean up, what they can make better, safer for people that are walking or it's, I, I think our village crew is phenomenal and I don't think they get enough praise. They are doing a great job.
We have a very good group.
They're awesome, very hardworking.
All around. Thank you very much. Um, is there a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for coming. Guys, happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody.